Okay, let's get started. We'll start this city council. Madam Clerk, will you call the role?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Pretendary Peskew.
Here.
And Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Daley. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now we get to the part of the agenda where we talk with the public about issues that are not on the agenda. I have one request for speaking on a non-agenda item, and that comes from James Kraus. Come forward.
Well, good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. My purpose is in discussing an issue which affects some of the residents on a few of your streets, Pecan and Wellerboro and Cypress. And it's pursuant to the events that occurred not too long ago when there was a pretty substantial mud flow. A number of the neighbors are here. I don't exactly know how I come before you. I don't really regard myself as spokesman for them, but I will do my best to represent the concerns they've expressed and ones that I have too. And that is that I'm led to understand that the volume of mud that still exists in the catchment basins on those streets represents a true physical hazard that could cause flooding again and mudslides again on the streets as happened before. Now, I am an attorney, but my knowledge in this area is almost nonexistent, so I will disclose to you that what I bring to you is a cursory examination, and it was enough to see that as far as the state of law is concerned in this area, bad pun, but it's very muddy, okay? It's not consistent. And the specific fact that I heard from a neighbor was that a request had been made to the city manager a few months back regarding what would be done to lower the mud levels that still are residual from the previous flooding. And apparently, it was stated at that time that the city did have an interest in removing that when the mud dried out. Time went forward, and this is all bird's hand, but when the request or the topic was brought up again with that individual, evidently guidance had been received to this council from the attorney stating a very important legal principle. This is a law which I know Dr. Rixby is familiar with, and it's called "The Law That No Good Deed Goes Unpunished." And that legal doctrine's, I'm being a little tongue-in-cheek here, but the point is, the city has some concerns, and perhaps quite rightly, that undertaking any action on that would somehow expose the city to greater liability. Well, if there's anything I saw in the brief look I took at some of the precedent and laws throughout the country, it's the real underlying principle. It's just one of reasonableness. So, my purpose is to completely de-escalate this, not to look necessarily at the legal fact, but to come before you as citizens in the neighborhood saying that we collectively have a physical problem. Nobody wants to see another big rain flood, which is not at all unlikely, given the funny climate we've had, saturate that water and cause additional flooding flows and endanger to some of the residents on the street. So, I'm not sure what I'm asking, but I am certainly putting before you that this problem is real, it's present, it exists. It's a physical one, and it's shared by all of us because we all care about keeping the streets clean and safe. And that's it for now.
Ordinarily, we don't, since it's not an agendized item, we're not allowed to take any action. However, I think this is something we've talked about on multiple occasions. And the facts of the case are, I believe you're talking about Almond Court?
Mm-hmm.
And Pecan.
Cypress Street was impacted by that.
And Cypress. And Cypress is the east-west street?
That's correct.
Okay. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, and, I mean, City Attorney and City Manager and Director of Public Works and whatever other titles you have. The issue is that Pecan is not a catchment basin. At the top of Pecan is a series of driveways, and there's a natural kind of a pocket there, but it's not an official catchment basin. So, that did fill up with a lot of mud to about halfway up to the level. It's on private property. It's not an official catchment basin, so cleaning it out is not within the purview of the city. On Almond Court, you don't have even any kind of catchment basin there. What you have is just the natural place where the Vs between the valleys come to the top of the street, and all of that stuff flowed on private property, from private property onto the streets and down onto Cypress. That's my understanding of it. There's no official catchment basin there. There's not even a temporary place to catch water. So, the issue has always been that because it's private property, we don't have the obligation or the rights to go onto that property and to remove mud. And furthermore, if we were given the rights, it would cost a considerable amount of money to do that because to create a catchment basin is an extremely expensive proposition. Just cleaning them out, the other catchment basins, is over a million dollars. So, that's just cleaning out catchment basins that are already constructed, including spillways, and you know, it's quite an expensive thing. So, if we decided at some point in the future to take Almond Court as a place that needs a catchment basin, it would require a significant amount of planning and funding that we don't have. And I understand that the owner of the property at the top of Almond Court has offered to give us some kind of a, either an express or an implied easement across the property, but it opens us up, as you said, to a lot of liability because we will have undertaken something that we don't really complete. You know, we don't have the funding or any other way to deal with it. And furthermore, the events that occurred last December were hundred-year flood-type events, and they don't happen every year. But hundred-year floods can happen every year for 10 years, you know, statistics are odd. But I don't know really where to go with this because there's not the funding to do anything more than what's currently being done. And yes, it does expose them to mud flows, but as you saw, even where there were catchment basins, massive mud flows occurred anyway. Those catchment basins are not designed to catch mud. They're designed to catch water. They caught water fine, and then when the mud came in, under the water, the water went up and over. So, if there's a mud flow season, we're getting mud in our streets, no matter what we do.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. You and I do have a history of vigorous polemics and dialogue, and I don't know if this is the right forum to continue this one, but in the argument you cited principally private property as the underlying basis that would provide the foundation for your argument, and even in the limited look I took, the area is much more complex. There are a lot more rights and liabilities at stake, and it's not a black-and-white area. I guess I would turn around and more ask my, and I really meant this when I said this was in the spirit of dialogue and to see if there's something that would offer a mutual pathway or participation in this. But the question I would have is, were that answer to stand just as it is, what would you suggest, then, that the residents and the citizens who are potentially impacted by that do? What course of action would they have?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you know, this is not an agendized item. We probably should not be discussing the item or going beyond, maybe asking staff to give a brief response or report back at a future date. And if council's raising some liability issues, it's generally best not to discuss those publicly before we've had a chance to review any potential issues or arguments that might be brought forward.
Do you want to give a brief response? What should they do?
That was more of a rhetorical question, and I appreciate exactly what you're saying. And I'm going to sit down now. The one other thing I might add, though, is, assuming for a moment that the private property nature of that is, that's all right, I don't remember the word, is probative or is the deciding factor, would the city entertain the possibility in the same manner that it would ask a property owner to abate other nuisances like weeding and fire protection, to take a little bit more aggressive stance to protect the, and this very quickly gets into the complexity of the laws in this area, but would they consider discussing that with that property owner? Anyway, I'm done, and thank you for your time. And I hope we do just open this dialogue, and if there's a path to discuss it outside of this forum or to take it further, that would be great.
Yeah, I think it's perfectly reasonable that you approach the city staff with the questions.
Sure. Be happy to.
Where do you live specifically?
I live, I am a resident of Cherry Valley, but I am a property owner in Loma Linda.
Okay.
Well, close to it, anyway. My wife is.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I could venture one other perspective, and City Attorney, please cut me off if I venture into forbidden territory. I'm not going to address any of the specific area you talked about, but just as an illustration of how complex these issues are, the San Timoteo Channel Flood Control Project has been something that's been talked about in the city since, I believe, the floods of 1969. Took decades to get funding for it. Finally, a funding was obtained 15 or so years ago. If you actually look at the legislation and authorization for it, the cost-benefit ratios actually did not meet federal standards. A lot of people said that was a pork barrel project that Congressman Lewis helped us get. It did provide significant protection, but it just shows how complex issues are of funding, of whether they meet funding criteria with, you know, the pork barrel issue that in our community, it was very valuable, but from a federal budget reason and analysis, it was in many people's eyes pork barrel. And it just, again, it doesn't directly relate to your issue, but it just shows similar issues of how difficult they are to handle and the funding and authorization to get things taken care of.
I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but we have a number of citizens of that neighborhood that are here expressing their grievance. Can we be specific in terms of what the next steps could be or should be for them in order to get this item agendized so that we can have a more comprehensive discussion that would hopefully achieve some mutual satisfaction, if that's going to be possible?
I would say it would be just direction to staff to prepare such.
And what would be helpful to staff? To have a list of specific questions? To have a request or proposal? What are we looking for from them to help us?
I did talk to the property owners and the residents who have impact, did have impact in the last storm. And so, I pretty much think that I know the issues that they're concerned, and I do understand their concern. But the hard part is, we've been told by, at first, I was thinking that maybe we could use the FEMA grant money or FEMA to help us get on the property and remove some of the dirt. But then, when I contacted with the FEMA, they said, "No, you cannot go onto private property." They will only help us and reimburse the city only on the basin that's on the city property. And so, yes, I'd be happy to meet with you again and bring it back here and be happy to go over the detail.
I think it might be helpful to put it as an item on the agenda so we can all comment and ask for the questions. Would that be appropriate?
Well, I think you could have some discussion. Certainly, you need to be careful not to get into areas of potential liability or litigation.
Correct.
That we've heard a few hints in that direction, not a threat per se, but it's always a concern.
I just think that, I think the residents are owed some discussion and looked at options with the pros and cons of each option, and which we all weigh in, give our input, and then perhaps give further direction to staff as to what should be taking place.
Just for the benefit of my clarification, the two issues are, and correct me, please, if I'm mistaken. The two issues are, first, it's private property, so we have neither responsibility or the right to go in and make modifications as we might feel are appropriate. That's point one. Point two is, should we have the opportunity to do that, we don't have the resources to do it at this point as a city, anyway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I can understand where there would be some, at least, if we can achieve some kind of mutual understanding of what the problems are and figure out if there are alternatives that might achieve some satisfaction. Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, I think it'd be reasonable to instruct the staff to give a presentation on the possibilities or impossibilities of elimination of threats versus mitigation of threats from natural disasters. And I think that's kind of a general topic that would be useful. So, good enough. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on any topic not on the agenda? Looks like we have one taker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ovek Strafjan. I am a neighbor there on Cypress Street. And I think our house was one of the worst damage that got garage inside. Not the rooms. It did not come to that. If it was during the night, that would have happened. But two sides of the house completely, from the side and the back, four feet, four inches of mud all over. I didn't know it was, by the way, most of the time I have not heard what you have said because of my hearing. But private property, if it is, then I wanted just to walk out and say, "Well, if it is private property, then it is, and I don't know what we can do." Is it possible to talk to whoever the owner is and see? Or it's no use, even if they agree? I mean, what are you going to do with that basin there? Even if he agrees, you do something, you say you have no resources. Is that right? City has no resources to do? I mean, the two sides were cleared beautifully. They're very nice. I mean, I just saw what it is then. But possibly, this was one of the worst, and it will be. It's completely full. It'd take one day of rain to do the damage that it did then. Is it, we just go and try to get insurance or? It is. It is coming. It is, it might be another hundred years. I don't know.
The cleanup, sir?
Yes?
The cleanup that we did was reimbursed by federal money.
By the way, I appreciate very much. It was a beautiful job of cleaning.
Right. And the problem is, is that the federal government has told us we can't use that money for private property. We can only use it for public property. So, that's where we had the money to do even what we were able to do. Unfortunately, the fiscal situation, we've had to lay off people, and we've had to cut the budget this year because there's very little money, and that's true everywhere, so that's how we were able to do the other cleanup.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and I think you can pay attention to the agendas, and we'll bring it back as a discussion item for the future.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I would be happy to bring it back to the city council on October 25th, which is the next city council meeting, so.
All right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward, Dr. Finesse?
I don't know whether I should bring this in here, but there is a storm drain on top of Almond that is totally full. And I just want you to kindly take a look at it and see what can be done. You know, one of these things that on the curb?
No, it's not a storm drain. It's outlet where the water come from the hill, go through this curb outlet and let the water flow onto the street.
So, I saw it yesterday when I went to look, and one of my neighbors actually brought it to our attention. It's full of debris and stuff, so it's useless now. I mean, who's supposed to clean that?
I can go look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to clean it up.
Yeah, it was. And I just want to thank you and remind you of your promise that when it rains heavy again, that you're going to look after us, right?
Yes, and like I mentioned.
Yeah, just keep an eye on us because I don't want to wake up in the middle of a mud puddle.
We was going to put a car rail on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Just a quick commentary. It's sometimes very frustrating to sit in this seat because as an empowered council, we are limited by rules of what we can do, what we can say, how we can comment, how we can react. And I think every single one of us ran for an elected office thinking we were going to come in and change the world, and we were going to do all these great things, and quickly realize how government works. Government is very slow and methodical, and unfortunately, because of things that have happened in other places and other times, it's very complicated. And every single one of us sitting up here wants to respond and say what we feel, but we have to be careful now because now we have to protect the city and you as well, so. Just a commentary, but it's hard sometimes to sit in this seat and to listen and not be able to answer.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. We'll deal with conflicts of interest as it arises. We have a consent calendar. Are there any items anyone needs to pull, or will someone make a motion on the entire consent calendar?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar in its entirety.
I'll second that, just a quick comment on item number three. It's great that we were able to get a $900,000 grant through the Small Business Administration, and it's nice that we're, even in this economy, we're able to get grants for all sorts of projects, and that's a very important one. So, now we're going to put it to good use in expanding our fiber optic network, so that's great.
I had a question with number four, specifically 4A, and I just wanted to ask the city manager, how often we make repairs at the park to those, to the swing sets and the jungle gyms and all that? I was actually up there last night, and I noticed there are some things in need of repair.
Yes, we're supposed to do annual inspection on all this playground equipment, and then we get to repair. The problem with the Hodor Crooks Park is we have a lot of uses, and the rubberized play surface, for example, we installed that about seven years ago, and we had to replace it already, and we try to keep that up.
Does that include some of the play equipment and the stairs going down?
Yes, yes, the stair going down. I'll be closing it off, but I will fix, we have a schedule to get it fixed.
Okay. And another commentary on that. We have probably one of the most beautiful parks in the area. It's not always Loma Linda residents that come to our parks, and I think sometimes that some of the issues we have up there are caused by that, but we're proud of it.
We are the jewel of the inland empire, and people like to look at jewels, so we get lots of visitors. Okay, any other comments on this? Then we'll vote. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll move on to reports of councilmen. That's after. We can do it in any order, but reports of councilmen. Hearing none, item number eight.
Before, can we, I think the parade is coming up, isn't it? You want to make a few comments on that so that everybody's updated and ready to roll out early in the morning?
Certainly. Thank you, council. We have a parade coming Sunday, this coming Sunday. We're excited about it in particular, and Chief Bender, you can chime in here with me if you care to, but we're having the World Trade Center artifact that our fire department was able to obtain, leading almost at the front of our parade. It's going to be on display as it goes down the parade route. We'll also be at the fair for people to see. It's a chance. We had, I think you'll agree, we had a very nice unveiling of that a few weeks ago. But not a lot, we had a lot of people there, but limited people there. And this is a chance for our citizens to get a chance to look at it and see it and remember that day and remember those firefighters and police officers and other safety people that went into those buildings to try to save people. And I've always said it's from such an evil act. If it hadn't been for those brave people, the body count was high, but it would have probably been much higher. So, we got, I want us to remember, I hope we'll remember that, but we'll also remember that the men in uniform that are in this room today give us that very same protection and go into buildings that are on fire and go into areas of danger for you and I every day. And so, it's our chance to think about that at the parade and say thank you to them. So, we hope people will come out. We hope people that are listening will be out and get to see that, as well as all the other fine things that we have, and then enjoy the fair in the afternoon. So, thank you, Councilman Daley, for giving me the opportunity to bring that forward. Thank you.
Any details for people? How many floats are we going to have? Is there going to be a?
Well, we have some interesting things coming up. We have a lot of vintage cars. Somebody that we all know, husband is a big wig at a Corvette car club, and we might have a number of Corvettes. We might have you in a Corvette when you go through. But we have about 80 different vehicles, vans, floats, cars, and what have you. So, it's interesting. We have fewer entries in terms of what our number, like we go, the cones you'll see out there. We have fewer entries, but we have more things in the parade. So, it's actually going to be a longer parade than we had last year, but it's fewer entries because there's just a bunch of multiple car entries. So, we're going to have a good time.
Good. I think I caught the mayor practicing his wave here the other day.
Yeah, all of you need to be practicing your wave to make sure you got that down right. Thanks.
Can I make a?
For the fair afterward, right? Is that a fundraiser for the academy, the fair?
Yeah, and, yeah, so a lot of the, they have a number of booths down there, a lot of businesses and other, and a lot of the classes are having little food booths, and it's a way to help the classes earn money for their field trips and that sort of thing. So, it's just a chance for the community to get out and say, "Hey, we're proud of Loma Linda. It's the jewel of the inland empire, and we're just, we're proud." Linda. It's the jewel of the inland empire, and we're just, we're, we're proud to be part of Loma Linda. And I would like to say, if you'll let me, that we had a, a committee meeting today, and it just struck me as the fire department and the public works department and the Loma Linda University Security Department and the Loma Linda Parking Director, if we didn't have them to help us out on this parade with the road closures and all that sort of stuff, we couldn't do this. We couldn't have a parade. And they're all, they all work so well together, and they were talking jargon that, that I don't understand when they were talking about all the things that they, they need to do. But they're very well coordinated, so hats off to you folks for encouraging them to help us. So I think it's a, a teamwork all the way around. So thank you very, very much.
And it begins at?
It begins at ten o'clock on the corner of Barton Road and, and Anderson, on down Anderson to the Academy Way to, to the academy. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now we go to item number eight, reports of officers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last city council meetings, Councilman Duper asked me to give you a report and update on the California Healthy City. And so I prepared a little PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Started back in January of nineteen ninety-seven, the Loma Linda University, I think it was Department of Public Health, came to the city and present a Healthy City program to the city council. And they set up goal procedures on how to go about getting the dedication for the California Healthy City and present the, the program to the council. And in August of nineteen ninety-seven, the city council did approve a resolution supporting the healthy city projects. In October nineteen ninety-eight, the city council formed a committees which consist, consider of, of the city council, city staff, planning commissioners, resident, business owner, community groups, institution and organization to join this, the healthy city groups. In September of nineteen ninety-nine, the city did the retail marketing opportunity analysis and followed with the, in October nineteen ninety-nine, the city did community wise survey where we sent out the survey questionnaire to every resident and business in town. The survey was the instrument was designed by the Loma Linda University School of Public Health and with assistance from the city staff, and we mailed it out to all the resident. After that, we received a response back from the survey, and I have a, a three-ring binder here with the, the questionnaire that respond to the survey. And so from, from that, we prepare a strategic action plan in, in, in January of nineteen two thousand, nineteen two thousand. And then in July of two thousand two, the city received a Healthy City designation. And in July of two thousand four, we also received a, the Healthy City Community Network members. Since two thousand two, we have accomplished quite a bit. We received a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollar in grant funding. A hundred fifteen thousand five hundred came from the California Public Health Institution. About twenty thousand dollar came from the County of San Bernardino Department, I mean, Public Health Department. We used those money to hire an intern, which is a student from the School of Public Health, to assist us in preparing a monthly nutrition program, community nutrition and gardening newsletter that go out to the resident, available for a resident every month. We also created the, uh, used the money for tool lending right, library at the North Central Neighborhood where the resident in North Central can come over to our community garden on Van Louven and rent the tools so that they can use for their gardens and clean up the front yard and so forth. We established the, the North Central Neighborhood Committees where we have our monthly meetings. We created three community gardens, one on Van Louven, one on Evans Street, and we have a table gardens over at the, the senior center. And part of the funding for those gardens came from the, the grant from the Healthy City. The, the city council adopted interim land use policy, and, and what this is does is when we have, the city have a vacant lot, the city can use that for community garden, for example. We have a vacant lot on Van Louven and been sitting vacant for a while. So the city manager at that time decided to do a community garden, so we did that. Again, like I mentioned before, we have a tool lending library. We have grant for block where the, the resident can, can come ask for some grant money to upgrade their, their front yard, paint their house and so forth. We have the student intern from the, the School of Public Health. We have, again, I think, monthly newsletter. And we do have workshop for the community resident, community gardens, inland temporary home, senior center, and the library program for the healthy kids. Right now, every, I mean, three times a week, we have a senior luncheon program, which is a nutrition program that is helped with assistance from the County of San Bernardino. And our city staff did a presentation at the annual Healthy City Conference. We have a farmer market with the help of the Chamber of Commerce, and the city also participate in the, the health fair, the farmer markets, the Chamber Business Expo, the, the newspaper article, the videos and radio station. And, and this is some of the things that we do. And I have to give credit to my assistant, Joanne Hyman. She's staff that, that run this program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds like we're almost as busy, if not busier, than Irvine, and we're just not as flashy about it.
There's, and in addition to that, Channel Three, our regular broadcasting, our PEG channel, as we're showing Healthy Lifestyle Television as a regular content broadcasting that shows nutrition, healthy lifestyle and healthy eating practices.
The newsletter, what's the distribution of that? Does it go by mail? Is it just available to be picked up?
We, we have available to be picked up at the, at the city hall, at the senior center and the library.
Okay. Have we explored whether or not we should also distribute and push it out electronically, if that's possible? I don't even know how many email addresses we have of citizens-
Yes, for the email, that's, that's probably possible. But we also sometimes send it out on the, the, the Chamber Newsletter also, the newspaper.
Is it, is it posted on the city website?
Just one comment. Excuse me. We'd be happy to put that in an insert that, that goes out with the Loma Linda report. We, we'd be happy to do that.
I think that's a good idea. And the, the workshops, what kind of marketing do we do prior to a workshop?
We, we, we advertise on the, the newsletter. We advertise on a Channel Three, and we advertise it at the, at the senior center.
Are there posters in the library?
Yes, yes, always on the library. Yes.
Or in the lobby here and so forth?
And what? Oh, oh, and at the sign, at the sign in front of the city hall.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes. And we have good turnout. We, we use the grant to purchase the, the cooking table that have mirrors on top so that you can, you actually all they can see when the person actually does the cooking.
All right, last question. Are there things that we have to do to sustain warranting that kind of, that label, Healthy City? Or once you have it, you have it forever?
I, I, I think once we have it, we have forever. Plus, if you go to the, the Healthy City website, they have a guideline on what we're supposed to do. And so therefore, we have been maintaining that.
Okay.
To, to, to maintain the, the Healthy City designation, yes.
Did the, did this Healthy Cities Commu-, Community Committee, did it participate in any of the general plan development? Were there any kind of approaches? Because the comments we received prior were, we need to work on the general plan and make sure that we, we have healthy, healthy requirements going forward.
I, I think what happened is we, we had the committees at the beginning when we, we established the Healthy City. But after we have that, we kind of, we kind of not meet anymore. But the North Central Neighborhood Committee still meet, and the city councils still meet, and, and, and the, the planning commission still meet. So, so they have that as a, I guess, to the back of the mind, and so.
Question and comment. Comment is, it is true, a lot of studies unfortunately do tend to sit on shelves and get dusty, and this probably has occurred more than any of us would like to see. But I do think it's a great opportunity to look at where we are. We can't afford to go back like we did fourteen years ago and have a survey and all the studies and, and some of the initial studies. But the one thing that seems doable to me is at least if we could look at the strategic action plan that we did have in place and bring those specific items to our attention and on future agenda and say, look, this, this, or these were the strategic action plans that we had, we've accomplished, you know, some of the ones that you've mentioned tonight, but obviously there are other ones that we have not achieved, and at least refresh ourselves what some of those are and then revisit, could there be some other addendums to that strategic action plan and revise that? So I, I would like to see us list this as either a future agenda item or a workshop or something, just to look at some of the strategic action plan and updating that and following up on items that we need to.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And, and we did have complete a lot of items that's on this, this, this plan. So I'd be happy to, to do that, sir.
Now, it, it wouldn't just all emanate from the city staff. There are people in the community, both those who work and live here, that are, were at least expressing an interest in presenting some kind of a workshop. And I think it'd be nice to work with them on, on rejuvenating our Healthy Cities designation, so.
Definitely, because again, if, if you are with the School of Public Health, I'd be happy to work with you because the department, your department did help us prepare this, this report, so.
Actually, sorry about the, thank you for being here, but thank you, the Dr. Sabate is probably going to be and Dr. Bellier are gonna be the main persons. You know, they work in public health, actually don't. That's all right, that's all right. I was here because I just saw last minute that this item was on the agenda, so we're just sorry about the, you know, we didn't come up in a large number. We just didn't know about it soon enough. And some of us were, were working late. But I do have a question is, how this, is this designation and this strategy going to protect us as far as legally if we stand against certain businesses or certain types of businesses from coming in? How can, you know, maybe that's a question to the city attorney.
We can't dis, we can't discuss. Mr. Attorney, could you?
Not discussing a specific business, though.
Well, we, we're agendized to, to, to get a report on the Healthy Cities designation. It's a report, and there's not really any action we do. However, just a generic response to that is that if, if we do plan to do anything that's from a planning perspective or from general plan amendments or things like that, it would have to go through a, a process. And there's always a process for amending the general plan. And if there's even any possibility of amending the general plan to, to Healthy Cities designations, we need to find that out.
Okay.
So I think we should, I think we're giving instruction to the, to the city staff to prepare some kind of a strategy and maybe have a workshop, and we can talk about what the possibilities are. It'd be great to hear what other cities have done.
Yeah, the City of Clermont did a lot. The City of Clermont, I'm aware, did, you know, had this kind of actions where they, if it didn't meet their, their requirement as far as their healthy impact, they refused the business to come in.
I, I kinda felt last meeting that as a city, we kinda took a beating. I, I really feel that way because, and it was brought to our attention that we didn't qualify and didn't meet the Healthy Cities communities. We weren't a member, and I'm actually feeling a little, I'm actually pretty proud of our city manager for researching this and finding out that we actually are a member and probably a member before some of these other communities were.
Well, I'm very happy about it.
I'm extremely happy about that, and that goes to show who we are and what we are as a community. So-
That makes us stronger, I think.
Right. So again, I, I gotta tell you, I'm just, I'm very pleased with the, with this report.
I didn't feel beat up. I just wanted you to know. Just a general comment. I think obviously there's more we can do. We're doing some, and it's nice that it's brought to our attention. It was kinda new to us as well. So sometimes when people bring issues up, we're able to find out more information as a result of that. I just have a general comment, and I'm sure it could be addressed when we have a workshop and address some of your concerns regarding legalities about various businesses and what have you. And that, that gets a little more complex. I would, I would advise you to do some research on your own, see what's, possibilities are. But just a general comment in general, I spend some time in, in various parks and other places, and I'm finding out that, you know, in general, if you want a healthy community, you want people outdoors. You want to encourage them to get out of their houses and spend time outdoors. And, you know, unless you're gonna go hiking in the desert or up in the hills, and that's limited to certain people, obviously because of the terrain and the distance they have to travel, the best place to be is really in a park. And so I, in my view, one of the best ways you can make your city healthy is by improving your parks. And not only improving them, but making them attract, building them in a way in which attracts people who would otherwise not go to parks. You know, we always associate parks with people who either wanna play a sport or have a picnic or perhaps having kids. But having a park that provides some sort of a, a garden or something, something they can view or being in an area in which it's just pleasant to be in. And unfortunately, a lot of the times that requires money to build your parks. And we're working very hard. We're trying to get grants and what have you. But I think we do have opportunities in the future. We can't really talk about them because there's some things that've come up where we have perhaps the possibility of building some amazing parks. That's been one of my biggest pet peeves is that despite the fact that we have nice parks, a lot of them tend to be on the south side. We have very few on the north side. They're nice. So one thing we can do is continue to emphasize improving our parks to try to make our city healthier. So I think this discussion is very healthy. We wanna continue to have it, and I welcome having a workshop so we can explore things that Mr. Brower talked about, which is to look at the strategic plan and see what else we can improve. Thanks.
And the dates of the workshops or would be then, sorry, the dates of the workshop would be determined today?
How about you give me a name and number? We can work together and create a workshop. I'd be happy to do that.
Sure, I'll do that now.
Sure, sure.
Are you previewed to all of our agendas? Like when you get notices?
Yes, well, I get them the Wednesday before, the Thursday before.
Correct. And but do you also get there for the planning commission as well? You might wanna request that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Any other comments from councilmen?
Going off on tangents tonight, but I guess entitled to once in a while. I get so frustrated and the tangent relates to Healthy Cities is our lack of cooperation from Los Angeles Airport Commission with both Ontario, which they control, and LAX to make them healthier for all of us when we walk in through the entrance ways and the sidewalks. It was at LAX about ten days ago, got blasted by all the employees and other people smoking right outside on the curbs near the terminal. You know, we wrote a letter as a city to the commission a couple of years ago. They basically blew off our concerns on that. I'd love to see pressure from the community and letters and emails and so forth. It is a real disgrace that you can't- It is a real disgrace that you can't help but walk into any of the terminals at those two airports and not be exposed to secondhand smoke in your face, and I just don't understand why they don't see the wisdom of making smoking areas where the average public access person that's walking into the airport does not have to be exposed to that. I think the only way they'll change is to hear from us, so, sorry for going off on a tangent, but thank you.
Sounds to me like a reason to be in favor of a local airport.
There's no smoking there right now, anyway.
No smoking nor flying.
Okay, any other comments from anybody? If not, then the city council's adjourned, and we'll move to the redevelopment agency agenda.
We call the order, the redevelopment agency, once again, any member of the public has an opportunity to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, moving on to regular items, item number one. I hear a motion for moving of the minutes.
I make that motion when we approve the minutes.
We have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make you guys do some work for once. We go to item number two, it's quarterly report from the Chamber of Commerce and a request for dispersment of funds pursuant to agreement with the agency. It's been moved by Mayor Rigsby.
I'll second.
And second by Dr. Daly. Just of a quick comment, I happen to review, we're one of the few cities, well, I wouldn't say that, we're one of the cities that actually does subsidize the Chamber of Commerce. Others, chambers in other cities like Redlands are actually self-sufficient. We don't mind, we're very much proud of our chamber, we try to work closely with them, and try to participate in many good endeavors to try to promote business within our city. But I happen to look at their report, and I'm very proud to see that they're continuing to function in a healthy manner, and live within their means, and actually come out with a little bit of a profit, so that's exciting.
And they produce a great report.
Yes. So, we wanna-
And a great parade.
Yes.
The report is very comprehensive and informative, thank you. I know how much effort goes into writing reports like that, so I have to recognize it.
I do hear a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and any reports, seeing none, we are adjourned until our next meeting on-
October 25th.
October 25th.
And at that day, we will have, also have, at 5:30, we have a ribbon cutting for our trail at the South Hill Preserve.
Where is that gonna be at?
At the trailhead, at the end of the Hoda Crooks Park.
Oh, where the basin is?
By the tennis court.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
I guess I do have just a quick announcement, I've had some people ask me about all the mud, or at least all the activity along Barton Road, and people were wondering what was going on over there, whether it was construction, and I think we mentioned it briefly, but just in case those who weren't paying attention, the county is clearing out the mud within the actual, what is that, our-
Channel.
Center of Kennedy Creek, and they've asked permission from the property owner, and there's quite a bit of mud, so that's why you see a lot of activity. And that's being put on that property, we're not sure how long it's gonna stay there, but it may be removed later on, so, thank you.
Thank you.